Hey, everybody. This is Mary Ann. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Jerry, you're gonna see me come and go. I'm still on by phone on the 9800 number, 612-9800, but I'm having some issues with connecting, so I'm gonna try to close out and log in again. But I'll stay with you by phone.
Hey, Julie, do we have anyone called saying they weren't gonna participate?
Uh, nope, nobody, nobody said anything to me.
I'll give it two more minutes.
Okay.
Opposing Trump, I think opponents at the Trump rally and Bucia's coming back from DC, so I think they're both gonna be absent.
Okay. Uh, that means what Raquel and Jean?
Jean, um, Jean was the only one that I heard from that said he wasn't gonna be there.
Okay. All right, we'll tell you when I'm gonna get started then, cuz I know Raquel is, um, I think she missed the last meeting, so uh, who would like to, uh, assume the role as, uh, Secretary? Phil, you got that?
A rhetorical question or what?
Phil, you got that, you got that gleam, yeah, you got that gleam in your eye.
Glimmer in my eye, okay.
And as long as, um, as long as we're doing this by Zoom, you're nominated.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, can I call the September fourteenth meeting and shall we tell them some planning commission order? Uh, ask the acting secretary to call the role, please.
Commissioner Dallow?
Here.
Commissioner DeCicco was absent. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Meredith is absent. Commissioner Flynn?
Here.
Commissioner Pone is absent. Commissioner Moore is absent. Chairman Moffett?
Here.
And Commissioner Turner is here. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Very good. First item is approval of the agenda. There are no corrections. Move by Dalu.
Support.
Support by Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next is approval of the minutes from the August twenty-fourth meeting. General corrections.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Turner, support by Dalu. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, see, then we've got three items, two, well, all three of them we've seen in some form or the other. Two are sort of our, our issues that we've reviewed at the last couple meetings. Uh, first being a both a rezoning petition and a site plan petition. Uh, Mark Lockwood, Lockwood Development. Um, I see the petitioner is here. Get name and address, and then why don't, uh, brief the description again of what, what you're proposing and then just sort of maybe highlight what you've changed from, from our conversation about roughly a month ago.
My name is Steve Gabries. I'm the Vice President of Development at Lockwood Construction, 2777 Franklin Road in Southfield, Michigan, 4034. What we're proposing for you this evening, it's been amended from a hundred and twenty-four unit senior assisted living building down to a hundred and thirteen unit building. It is a full-service senior, senior, uh, building. What we've done since, there were two items that came up at the last meeting. There were large items for the, for the, uh, planning team and, uh, one being parking, one being, being building scale. What we did was, and I'll have the architect speak a little bit more to that, we've reduced the size of the building by nine units. We've brought some of the, the sizing of the building down from, uh, to two stories in some sections. In addition, we have, uh, put, added some land bank parking onto the, uh, so that reduces the overall parking requirement. In addition, we added some parking in some of the land bank areas. But I'd like to have Jordan, uh, the township planning staff and the architect, Julie and the staff I work well with together to come to a good solution. I'll let Jordan, the architect, speak to that. Jordan?
Yeah, I'm Jordan London from Edmund London Associates and our office address is 205 750 Civic Center Drive in Southfield. Um, I'm gonna share my screen and hopefully that'll work. Let me, let me know if that worked. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So first, I do wanna thank Julie for working with us on this. Uh, we, um, she had some concerns relative to the scale of the project, the size of the units, the parking, and the proximity to the neighborhoods. Uh, so what we proposed was, uh, reduction in the massing of the building. Uh, you can see that we've, um, reduced the units. We went from a hundred and twenty-four, as Steve said, to one thirteen. Um, we, we have, uh, we now have eighty-eight one-bedroom and twenty-five two-bedroom, so uh, we've reduced the number of two-bedroom units. Uh, the size of the building has been reduced from a hundred and thirty-five thousand gross square feet to a hundred and sixteen thousand, a little over a hundred and sixteen thousand gross square feet. And we previously proposed a hundred and sixteen parking spaces. And now we have a possible, uh, parking on-site of a hundred and sixty-three spaces with forty-one of those proposed to be land banked. So you can see in this rendering, uh, that we've, uh, we've dropped the, the, the areas, the east and west wings of the building to two stories, so that faces, uh, Van Dyke and it faces the neighborhood to the west, the residential, single-family neighborhood to the west. This is... Again, you can see, we've also enhanced the building, uh, materials, more brick and stone uh, on the materials of, of the building, and we've also reduced the, the, um, the, the, uh, pitch of the roof significantly, so that also reduced the massing of the building. So here you can see the site plan is very similar, but back in here, we have uh, parking spaces that are land banked, proposed for the extra parking spaces. Again, the building on the first floor and the second floor remain similar to the one, uh, to the one you saw previously, but the third floor has been reduced to the center of the building, uh, while, while the, uh, the wings east and west are two-story. Okay, so, and, does anybody have any questions, or do you want me to stop sharing my screen?
Uh, if that's all you have to share, I want to just, uh, just continue.
Yeah.
So why don't you pu- put, put the site plan back up real quick, if you don't mind? The, the overall. Now, Julie, you and I spoke earlier today. You mentioned that you, you, you thought there was another, there was an area potentially for additional parking. Do you wanna point that out?
Um, I, it, it is on the north, um, portion of the property, Chairman, along that stretch of parking there, um, a- a- all the way down to the, to the, to the west, to the west. They're right in that area.
Okay. So potentially, there's like another, maybe ten spots or so, that if, if, if things got overcrowded?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else you wish to share?
That's all that I have. Steve, did you wanna speak to the, um, parking? And we previously submitted also the, the parking, for other Lockwood developments, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but if you have any...
The documents we submitted just indicated that the average age within our existing portfolio for seniors is about eighty-two, and we have the range of parking for our, um, the tenant, the average number of tenants with cars ranges from thirty to forty, depending on the size of the project.
Okay.
So we're, and we're well below, we're below the, um, the number of spaces per unit, well below that, so it averages, we look like, I'm gonna be, it averages on some of these point eight-six, point nine-five, or, uh, as a somewhat below from our operating history. That was something that was requested at the last meeting.
Julie, do you wanna offer your, your comments?
Yes, I'll go over mine. Um, so, as you know, that there's been some modifications, um, to these site plans that we, as we've been going along. Now, um, Jordan and I have been working together and trying to find some sort of reasonable accommodations for the parking spaces, and I think, you know, uh, we, we've reached some sort of an agreement that, you know, we could, both can live with. You know, they are providing the forty-one lane bank spaces along, along the south property line, and then there's some room for additional spaces if needed. As far as the rezoning, I, you know, it's, it, we had this site rezoned during R-12 before, I think it's a, it's a good use and it's compatible with our master plan um, to change it up along Van Dyke there. I think that there's a number of retail buildings, that, that, there's a lot of retail along that stretch, and I think this mixture will play well into that area. They've addressed the special land use standards, and, and I don't have a problem at this time recommending approval for the rezoning in the special land use site plan.
Okay. Um, I just wanna make, make sure it's clear that, that, you know, what triggers to, to you, to, that, that, you know, that the township can trigger, um, the development of those additional parking spaces, that, um, you know, it is once, when, if our, the planning department determines that it's necessary, that you'll follow their direction.
Yes, that's understood.
Okay, very good. Uh, to the board, any questions for the petitioner?
Uh, question for the lawyer or the planner, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Flynn.
In your third paragraph of your review, you said it is not likely this development will revert to multifamily residential due development due to the size of the units. Is there anything legally that would prevent them from just flipping that switch?
Uh, Mary Ann, do you want me to answer that, or?
Having some technical difficulties here, my apologies. You know, really, the way that we've done this, and there, I mean, you could, you could probably condition that, but it's, there really isn't a way to do that unless it's, uh, conditional rezoning. So, I mean, you really are, uh, you really do have a traditional R-12 zoning, and that would be a possibility in the future, but as, uh, as Julie's pointed out, practically speaking, it probably just wouldn't be as attractive to a typical user.
Okay, well, my concern, um, and, and I think if it's not a conditional rezone, um, you know, if I could, if, if economic conditions reach the point where it, it didn't make sense to just flip that switch, I, I would think that, uh, knowing the temper of this, the township board, that they would want that restriction written in, because uh, otherwise, I think it'd be highly unlikely that you would get an R-12 through there if that restriction wasn't a fact. That's my two cents, Mr. Chairman.
Good thinking. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, then, now, we're, we're, we doing two motions, the first one being initially on the rezoning, and then the second one on the special land use.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I'll move to recommend approval to the Township Board of rezoning petition number two-dash-twenty, Mark Lockwood, Lockwood Development Company. Rezone parcel number twenty-three dash zero-seven dash zero-four dash four-seven-six dash zero-zero-five from C-one local retail to R-12 multiple family low-rise with the following reasons. The proposed change in zoning is aligned with the policies contained in the township's master, adopted master plan. Other multiple-family zoning sites are located on the west side of Van Dyke, north of Twenty-Five Mile Road in the vicinity of this parcel. The current C-one district boundaries are not appropriately located in relation to existing retail development trends and expectations. There does not appear to be sufficient demand for additional commercial zoning on this portion of Van Dyke, and the change is not out of scale with the needs of the community.
Is your support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Dalu. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Uh, the chair votes yes. Uh, so the next item is, uh, on the special land use, uh, portion of this request. And again, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I'll move to recommend approval to the Township Board for special land use application. Number twenty-dash-zero-five SLU one from Mark Lockwood, Lockwood Development Company, located at five-five-one-three-three Van Dyke, west side of Van Dyke, north of Twenty-Five Mile Road, based on the following. The proposed use represents an appropriate transitional land use between the abutting, single-family residential zone properties and the commercial and office uses along Van Dyke. Adequate access is available to the site from Van Dyke. This use will not generate nuisances for the abutting properties. The proposed use will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings of, or unreasonably affect their value.
Support to that.
Okay. Motion by Turner, support by Dalu. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Oh.
I'm sorry?
No.
And the chair votes no. Uh, motion carries three to two. Okay, next item, uh, is site plan number two-zero, uh, dash one-six, Eric Hyderer, Shelby Coney Island.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hyderer, are you, are you presenting, or do you have someone?
Yes.
Okay. Get name and add.
Eric Hyderer, Polyarch four-four-zero-four-five Grasset, uh, representing, uh, Coney, uh, Shelby Coney Island. Uh, we were here last month, and we had some engineering landscape issues that we were addressing. Uh, we submitted those to Julie, and, uh, we want kind of an approval for site plan.
Okay.
Approval.
Julie, what do you think?
Um, I think there is an improvement to the plans. They, uh, Mr. Hyderer, uh, is doing the brick wall along the front of Twenty-Five Mile and Shelby Road. And since this is an existing site, he can encroach into the front yard setback with the parking spaces. I think they're gonna patch the asphalt parking lot, um, and he's addressed all the other concerns that we had at the last meeting, so I don't have an issue with, um, approving the site plan.
Okay. Did you, I, you know, I, I, when Julie and I spoke earlier, I, I made a suggestion, maybe that the Macomb Orchard folks um, may have, you know, some money somewhere in a kitty that, you know, that they could spruce up a little bit of that area, so... But I just tried to reach out, so just as a side note, that, that maybe there may be an opportunity, given that you guys are, or, your, your client is putting, uh, you know, significant, uh, kind, uh, sort of contribution into his asset.
Yeah, and the trail runs right below, uh, behind that, so, yeah.
Frankly, and, and that's, and it's, it's a good, it's a, you know, that's a good thing for your client, for sure.
Absolutely.
But, but maybe there's...
We're open to that, yeah.
Yeah, maybe there's some way that, uh, you know, that they, uh, they can sort of help encourage, you know, the patriots.
Okay, great, yeah. Yeah, cuz we're putting a significant amount of money in the renovations, as you can see with the elevations and really updating, uh, cuz it's, it's kind of in bad shape, so we're gonna try to really, uh...
Yeah, it was, it was in bad shape, it was, it was in bad shape when it was the Dairy Queen, so...
Yeah, yeah, way back when, so...
Okay, uh, any questions from the, from the board? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dalu?
I move to approve site plan twenty-sixteen for Katrina Margilaj for Shelby, Coney Island, parcel number twenty-three-zero-seven-zero-five-three-seven-six-zero-zero-nine, located at the southeast corner of Twenty-Five Mile Road and Shelby.
Second.
Okay, moved by Dalu, support by Flynn. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck to you. Tell your client to wish them, wish them well. Very good.
Good luck. Take care. Bye-bye.
Uh, final item, item they have this evening is, uh, the Phase Two, uh, report from the Section One slash Two traffic study that was done. Julie wanted to...
Okay, um, so, earlier this year, we hired, uh, Birdman and MKSK Brad Strater to do the second phase of this traffic study that we started back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, this is for Sections One and Two, and, um, what they ended up doing at the ver- very first report, what they did is they addressed existing conditions and what's needed, um, for road improvements, near-term scenarios, and long-term scenarios. From that report, what we have to do is now is the second phase and, um, come up with a cost-sharing agreement with the developers that are coming in, in Sections One and Two. As you can see that the report, it addresses, um, those intersections, those six intersection, intersections that need improvements, and allocated, um, the long-term peak hours intersection impacts for those sections and the total costs. Each development is listed on there, as you can see, and it's allocated by the percentage and the volume of traffic that, um, that that development would contribute to. This report is also in the hands of the Macomb County Road Commission, um, in getting their evaluation for the costs of such improvements, so um, I just wanted to forward that to the Planning Commission and ask if they had any questions. And we'll go from there, and it'll be at the next, or not at the next Township Board meeting, that which is tomorrow. It will be at the last Township Board meeting in September for their approval as well. But, uh, basically, that's it, so we're just, uh, wanted to review it with you. If you have any questions, I can answer your questions pertaining to this. Um, what, the next phase of this would be meeting with the developers, um, make, you know, getting them familiar with these, with these cost-sharing agreements and, um, start implementing some sort of a plan, um, to collect the fees.
You met the last meeting in October, right? Tomorrow is the last meeting in September.
For the board meeting?
Yeah.
Um, yes, or the first meeting in October, whatever meeting they have after this one, Mike, we'll, we'll put it on.
Cool. You got me for three more.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dalu?
I have quite, Julie, I don't know, I, this is like, there was a lot of improvement in, uh, traffic study, with the roads, traffic lights, and everything else, which is excellent. But these developers already been approved to their project, and now you're gonna go and give them millions of dollars in bills, telling them this is your share of the development. How is that gonna work?
Actually, Carl, it hasn't been approved. It's been, it was shelved, denied at the last board meeting in, uh, Lombardo, went back to drawing board, so nothing's been approved yet, Carl.
Right.
Panel, panel is approved.
It's not part of this, is it? Or was it?
It, it is part of it, Jerry, but I believe his, um, we conditioned his approval on him buying into this cost-share agreement as well. Anything in Sections One and Two is going to have to, um, you know, to get their approval, is going to have to buy into this, uh, cost-sharing.
Well, so as long as it has been addressed before, and it's not gonna be a surprise, then that's good.
Right, uh, the developers that are in there, um, like Mr. Penna's development, he knew that this was coming. Um, at that time, we didn't have any, you know, estimates, um, what it's going to cost, um, for those improvements, but, you know, and that's the, the gist of this report.
Yeah, and that, and that was part of the conversation with the Lombardo, the many conversations we had.
Correct.
On the Lombardo developments, so that...
Correct, and, and, um, we haven't, you know, as Mike said, we haven't put the, um, Lombardo development back on because this was in the works, and I figured we'd get this done and in the works to, this way, if anything, you know, when anything comes through, they're aware of, of what they have to contribute.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay. Anyone else? Entertain a motion.
Move to, uh, recommend the Township Board accepts the Section One and Two traffic study. Developer fair share contributions as prepared by Birdman, and forward to Macomb County, uh, Department of Roads.
Forward.
Up forward.
Okay, moved by Flynn, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Uh, any plan, uh, planners, direct, planning directors report?
I don't have anything, Chairman.
Okay, does anyone from the public wish to address this body? I see a bunch of mute phones on the screen, so I'll assume that to be no.
If not, Mr. Chairman, motion...
Mr. Dalu? Your support?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourned.
Good night.
All right, everyone, uh, good evening.